Order the September. Two thousand twenty-five meeting of the Toledo Washington Planning Commission. If we could start this, please, if you would all rise, remove your caps. And Tom Hill is going to take us through the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. This is the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. It's apparent that we do have a quorum here, so we can continue with business. Uh, is there any other business items that need to go on here? Okay, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So.
Seconds. Tom Hill knows, or they could brawl seconds. Any discussion on the business licenses? Meeting of last minute, last meeting. If not a call for a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Um, at this time, we are going to be holding a public hearing. On the. Growth Management Plan, the twenty-year growth planning management plan for the city of Toledo. And I'd like to turn it over, first of all, to our consulting planner, Todd Johnson. Who'll give you a brief introduction.
Thank you, Chair Birch. As you mentioned, this is the Planning Commission Public Hearing. On the two thousand twenty-five comprehensive plan update, uh, which generally includes changes to, uh, the mapping. Uh, the zoning mapping and the future land use mapping throughout the city. It includes changes to the land development code, uh, that not only support. The changes in zoning that are proposed, but also the changes in critical areas and some other, um. And some other edits that are also related to the required changes by stat, changes in state statutes that. Require us to update our code to meet state requirements, um. And then also the, uh, comprehensive plan document has been updated, updating policies and. Um, and adding numerous sections that were mandated, um, by the state. Um, what we're hoping to accomplish tonight is, uh, I. Have a few changes that were made to the critical areas ordinance that I'd like to have, uh, Carrie and Francis talk through. And this was in response to some CIPA comments that were received, uh, during our CIPA comment period, and we also had a meeting. With the State Department of Ecology and they were encouraging some of these changes, um, so we've. We've made some of those changes. I also have, uh, emails here from, um. From two different representatives from Department of Ecology. I have, I'm gonna go through one of those if I can, just because. It is commenting on the revised version. That you have in front of you tonight. Um, the other one was commenting on a previous version. Um, and we haven't heard back whether or not the state is acceptable to the changes as we proposed from, uh, from that commenter. Um, but we do have, just today, we got a comment from, um, Heather Bush from the Department of Ecology. And the state is reviewing this, the Department of Ecology is because we also. Have an update to our shorelines program that they're reviewing, that's not related to our comp plan changes. So it's, it's, it's all part of the city's planning and zoning and land use. But that's an entirely separate process. But this critical areas code will be used to help support the. The shorelines code, which is pending, um, approval by the state. City Council already adopted that. I believe, um, quite a few years ago now, a couple of years ago, twenty twenty-two. And, um, the state just has never. Um, approved of that draft to be used. So we're still using our old sho- shorelines code until the state approves it, even though councils adopted it. The Department of Ecology has, uh, the review authority for shorelines plans. So they're commenting on our comprehensive plan updates. Um, but they're commenting in light of what's needed to support the shorelines code. Which they do have review authority over. The, um. Heather is commenting specifically on a section, uh, where we have our. Our riparian, uh, buffer tables and the site potential tree heights. And she's specifically asking a couple of questions because in some cases. The, the site classifications may change throughout a site. Or you might have intervening features that are different from the site generally. Um, and so she was asking. What happens when you have more than one site classification, more than one buffer width? On an individual site, because the code doesn't speak to that case, so, um. And then the other thing that she was asking, uh, we've. We've referenced the state, um, online mapping to help. Individuals to classify their sites and know what their classifications are. Uh, just by going on to the website and pulling up the information that's there, it can, it, it can show you what the buffers are by the state guidance. Um, but. We also have a table with the base buffer widths based on the classifications. So in the language that we have, um, she's reading it to mean that we. Defer to the website, the state's mapping website over the table that's in our code. Because we do offer that as an option. We say you can go to that website. Um, to help to determine the site potential tree height, which is what sets the buffers. So. Those, those comments, um. We haven't yet addressed, so we should probably talk about those a little bit more as we get into it. But, um, and maybe, uh, I don't know, Carrie, did you wanna? Explain anymore? Uh, I would like Carrie to go through too and talk about the changes that are made. In response to ecology, so maybe she can cover all of those together. Um, the general process for tonight's meeting is, uh. We'll give a staff report, we'll have some discussion on these specific elements. And then, uh, this is a public hearing, so at some point you'll have to open the public hearing, take public testimony. Um, and then once that testimony is completed, then you'll close the public hearing, you'll deliberate on. Whether or not you can make a recommendation to council, whether or not you want to change any of these documents. And then hopefully at the conclusion of that deliberation, you'll forward a recommendation to council. That they adopt or, or not adopt, um, you'll, or adopt with modifications as determined through the meeting. And then once that happens, we'll schedule it for council. We still have the sixty-day review to get through. We just started that. So it won't go to council for a couple of months for their review and approval. Counsel is the approval body for changes to all of this stuff, so your recommendation will go to them. Um, and they also will have a public hearing and take additional public input at that point, so. Um, there's two opportunities for public hearings, um, along with the numerous planning commission meetings where we've always been open to public input and public comments. That's the, the general process, so, um, if there aren't any questions from the commission, then I'd like to turn it over to Carrie and, uh, to talk a little bit about the changes. That we've made since the last meeting to the, the critical areas codes.
Can we mention also the numbers and the, and the actual, uh, document for the plan, so we can reference it in our? Devices?
Yes, if you're, if you're following along real time, um, I think Carrie can. Call out code sections that she's talking about with the numbers and the land development code.
Thank you.
And these will all be in the wetlands and habitat sections.
I think we're pretty familiar with where we ended the. Conversation last time with recommendations, so could you take us through, uh, whatever changes were mandated?
Carrie, that would be you.
Yeah, I'm just trying to unmute. The hardest part of any call. Um, and I, I was just gonna clarify something, so, um, and maybe Todd can touch on this a little more too. So, um, ecology can't mandate. Anything in our CAO, um. So they have recommendations, they can, um, strongly, you know, suggest. But it isn't until you get into the SMP. Process where they can. Um, so when we met with ecology, they made those two distinctions. Um, so I just wanted to clarify, these aren't, what, what I changed wasn't necessarily because it was mandated, but it, it was. There were things that were so out of the ordinary from what they have approved that we felt like. We should probably change it. Um, so the first one, um. It, it's on page ninety-nine. If I have the same page numbers. That you do, it's table, the table one land use intensity table in the wetland section.
It might be better to cite the, the code reference that.
Oh, okay. Uh, twenty point oh eight.
Okay.
Does that work better than page numbers for you guys?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so we had a discussion with ecology, um. They were still really pushing back on having, uh, residential in the low land into intensity. Um, I did point out to them that Clark County has this. Uh, low intensity residential use in their approved code. Um, Clark County does have some, um. Stipulations on being able to qualify for using, um, low intensity land use for residential. Um, so I suggested instead of completely taking residential out of low. That we could potentially just use what Clark County had for their qualifiers. Put it in a footnote. And then that would allow us to keep that. Low. Uh, residential use, um. They did say that they would be amenable to me doing that, um. You know, as long as the qualifier was there, they were basically. We'll let you leave it there. Uh, or they were more comfortable with leaving it there. Um, so that's what I did. I added that.
And the, and the footnote basically covers, um, so. Residential can be a low intensity land use if no greater than ten percent of the total effective impervious. Surface area of the site, sixty-five percent, um, native or naturalized cover must be retained on the site. And then less than three hundred square feet of developed area for public roads and utilities. Located within a right-of-way easement or tract. So those are the qualifiers that we added and doing that. Um, helps ecology to accept residential and. As a low with, uh, low intensity use within the buffers. Which means lower intensity uses have smaller buffers, so it needs more area for development, so it needs residential parcel. No sense? Thank you, Carrie. Do you wanna move on to the next one?
Yeah, um, we didn't really have, um. Much in the way of.
I think the next sheet was under twenty oh nine. And it's.
Yeah, it's the increased and enhanced wetland buffer widths, um. I was just gonna say we didn't have any more in that section, um. So the text that we added there, we had a big discussion back and forth about the, we had pulled out that text. That said, in order to use the wetland buffers in the table. You had to have a vegetated buffer, and if you didn't, then you had to plant it. Um, we were able to add some text in there that. Gave us a few more qualifiers. In order to not have to put that standard language in there, back in there. And most of it comes from the word may. In, uh, three A. And so that it really, the department has the ability to. Say, I feel like. We don't need to enhance, or we don't need to increase the buffer widths. The buffer widths are fine as they are, where the way that it was worded before, there was no flexibility at all. It was just, if you use these buffers, they will be vegetated. If they're not, the, if they're not, they will be, if they are, you're fine. But there was really no, there was no, that was it.
I think that's what we want.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, um, we were trying to introduce that flexibility, I think, as a result of that. Okay, and then. Um, were any other questions or comments on that one?
No, I think it served the purpose. What we were trying to do, of course, was. Decrease the amount of onerous extra charges that might take place for someone who wants to do something of their property.
Okay, Carrie, you wanna move on to the next? I think it's twenty dot one one. And it's, uh, sub subsection one C that was added.
Yeah, I think we went over that last time, but, um, yes, this was a one that they had commented before, um. In that first round, but, uh, we had not had buffer averaging cannot be paired with buffer reduction on the same wetlands. Um, we should have had that text in there, that's a very common, um. Common text that you can't buffer average and then, and then bring it down in one area and then reduce it even more than that, um. And that's standard language that have been in most CAOs for a lot of years. So that was just, uh, an oversight on our part that wasn't in there that ecology, um, had suggested we added, so we added that. Um, on two under that same twenty dot eleven. Um, ecology wanted us to add quite a bit of language into this section. Um, they agreed that the most, um, important one to them that they really wanted us to add was this D that I added, um. Which basically says, um, the inability to derive reasonable economic use. Is not the result of the applicant's actions. Such by segregating or dividing the property and creating undeveloped condition, um. They wanted us to add in any actions by a previous property owner. Todd and I were uncomfortable with that because. And I've seen this before where. That language has been in there and somebody buys a property and then they end up doing all this mitigation or work because of something that. The previous property owner did, um, so we did remove that. And just left the language, uh, the rest of the language as they requested.
So this, so this section affects, um, the city's ability to process reasonable buffer reductions to allow specific uses. So that qualifier, um, just basically says what Carrie was explaining. That, that's how it impacts the, the, the overall applicability of the code is that, um. If somebody were to come in and say, well, my parcel is unreasonably. Constrained by these buffers and I can't get any economic benefit out of it, um, then. That can't be a result of their own actions, um, and it, um, and it's.
Is it also saying that if it's not the result of their own actions, they will be, uh, allowed to sort of mitigate the buffers essentially for that use case?
Right, yeah, so like, so that, subject to the above criteria, which there are, you know, still. Three other criteria there that they have to meet, but, but specifically this just says. It's, it's not a result, so if you go in and you have a large piece of property and you subdivide it into two smaller pieces of property and one of them is. Entirely impacted by a wetland buffer now. Then you can't come in and claim, oh, well, I can't build a house on that because it's unreasonable, but you in fact were the one to divide it up into the two smaller chunks. And make it unreasonable, so in, in that, in that case, um. It's not supported for the variance to reduce the buffers to allow you to build a home or a larger home.
And if somebody ends up with a property which happens to be in this situation and it's no fault of their own, they have a way in which they can.
That's true, we don't have to sit through a forensic historical search of property owners. And get nailed with something that was done forty years ago.
Right, yeah, we, um, we have not added that just because a lot of people. And it's not something that's disclosed in the title report necessarily, if you have wetlands or buffers on your site.
Right.
So you may buy a parcel of property with the intent to construct a home on it and just be totally unaware of what environmental constraints it has. Um, I think most homeowners don't do that research when they buy homes, uh, or buy parcels of land to build homes and, um. Some of the, you know, some of the more experienced ones do, but, um, but that's. That's sort of tough luck, right? If you buy a piece of property that's un, unbuildable because of buffer constraints. And, and you didn't know, you should be allowed to get some relief.
Yeah.
To that, you still have to, you, you'll still have to mitigate and maintain the water quality and do all the other things, but. In those cases, I, so that I, I thought it was unreasonable for ecology to ask us to hold people, um. Responsible for previous owners' actions, so.
Well, I, I think it's important, though, that during this entire process, we've increasingly added, um. Placeholders for our work. To do some research when people come in for a building permit. To help prevent those things from happening. You, you know, the pre-planning meetings that we ask them to come in and do are perfect for. For Rachel to pull up the GSI map. And to explain to a homeowner, hopefully a property owner before they ever buy the property that.
Right.
That, you know, these are the, uh, mitigating situations on your property that you're gonna have to be aware of if you decide to build here. To help eliminate somebody's headaches. Of going off on their own with their own architect and getting a bad news.
It, is that, is that pre-planning meeting, is that a good thing? Doesn't affect the board.
It's something that the.
Comes at work permit and there's a, a, a planning or a meeting.
It's always been available, um, but it's an option to applicants, it's not, not required, but they can always come in and schedule a, a, a pre. A pre-submital meeting and talk to the city about what the standards are. Um, or they can just walk in and ask too, I mean, that's. That's part of the, the customer service that the city provides is. We know better than what, what most average property owners know what the requirements are and what the permits are and. Um, and, and Rachel certainly can pull up the maps and look at the GIS and determine, oh, they have a map stream through your property, that's gonna be an issue that needs to be addressed.
Yeah.
So, but the, but the pre, the pre-submital meeting has, has always been, as long as I've been doing. Work for the city, at least for, what, the last four or five years. Um, it's always been an option and it was on, it was in your codebooks when I got here, so it's been there for a while.
Yeah, I think we've only really done with, like, um, that alteration subdivisions, but we also weren't doing permits several years ago, um.
But I think, I think we did talk about that when we decided to take on the, doing our own permits, so we should, um. How would you say, uh, emphasize that? That meeting as a information gathering place for the potential home buyer or own builder. Uh, that the city does offer and that they should take advantage of.
They, they are required for subdivisions and short blocks, you have to come in and have them. Okay, Carrie, you wanna take us to the next?
Sure. I think, um, the, the, uh, so in twenty point one two. Um, I added some clarifying language because they were asking why we didn't have mitigation sequencing. Um, they didn't, when they first reviewed this, they didn't get the general CAO section. So they didn't realize that some of the things that, that, um, had already been addressed in that section. So what I did for them is I just pointed them to, uh, where that section is in the general section. Um, because it wouldn't make sense to put it here twice. So that was just, I, I just did that for clarity for them and, and also, I mean, anyone that reads it. But most people that read it are gonna see, they're gonna be able to see those general conditions, so, well, i- it's just they were looking at it without it, so. In their mind, it, something was missing because they didn't realize that it was already addressed in the general section. And I'm just looking through, I don't think I had anything else. Um, until we get to the fish and wildlife areas.
Could I make a comment here with regard to compensatory mitigation? And I'm not, I'm not sure if the citizens of the city are, are aware of the fact that the city does belong to a land bank. Uh, for mitigation of buffer areas. Uh, and they are available. And the intent behind that is to allow you to purchase credits against existing, uh, mitigation areas. So that you can. Essentially due to the better good, you, you, you're trying to improve, improve through the credit system. A much larger wildlife area or, or, or mitigation area. In exchange for eliminating the headaches involved in a very, very small mitigation area that you might have on your property. So I would suggest that, that citizens actually read through that part and. And make a determination if it's worth their while to do that. You have anything further on that?
Are you talking to me?
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay, um, I don't have anything to add on that, um, although I would point out. Um, sometimes there's confusion with banks, um, that it's just, um, you have an impact and then you just. Write a check to the land bank and that's. You're good to go, and there are conditions on all mitigation banks. That you have to have a permit through the, whatever jurisdiction is, um, triggered for that impact. So they have to go through all the standards of, um. The, um, mitigation sequencing, they have to write a bank use plan, so it's. Uh, sometimes there's this, uh, perception that it's just this thing that, you know, you, you decide you don't wanna mitigate on site. You go to a bank, give them the money and you're good to go. Um, there is a lot of regulatory process. That has to happen first before you're allowed to use the bank, um, it's not onerous, but it is in place. So that type of thing wouldn't happen, um, and things would be used at the bank that shouldn't, you know. Haven't gone through the permit process.
Okay, moving on. All right, so we'll move them to the habitat section.
Yes. So the first thing that was added, um, is in twenty-four point oh three. And, um, this was actually an addition. That was, uh, helped kind of bolster, um, some language that we added farther down. Um, but, so what we had written, um, and this was, um. Language to allow the administrator or the city. Um, to determine habitat mitigation sufficiency. Um, they may, may solicit recommendations from WDFW, although it is our, uh, Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife. But they are not required to do so. Um, Todd thought it was a good idea and I agree that they can also solicit it in, uh, recommendations from a qualified professional, so they could. Go to a consultant, say, you know, um. This is what I'm thinking to do for mitigation, do you feel this is sufficient? Um, that just adds another layer, so they don't just have. Either the department or go to WW, they can also, uh, go to a qualified professional in that, in that particular area.
All right, the next piece?
Um, that's twenty-four point oh four. Um, ecology had asked for, um, clarification on how. To determine site class for site potential tree height buffers. Um, I provided, um, the text that was in both Vancouver and Clark County's code, which refers. Um I provided um the text that was in both Vancouver and Clark County's code, which refers to. The tree heights mapping tool. Um I was trying to explain to ecology, though, however. Um uh uh the city isn't going to be able to figure this out on their own. Um it's very similar to um. If somebody has impacting a wetland, we're not going to ask the city to do. A wetland rating and determine in the category. Um that's out of the scope of what the city could do. This is the same thing. It's not a tool that you can just go to and figure out. What your site class is and what the corresponding buffer is um easily. Um there are a lot of other factors that go into it um and it would. Make more sense for like with wetland impacts that a consultant. Would go through the mapping. Um one thing that ecology had asked was. What do you do, see, and this is where it gets complicated, what do you do if the site class when you're on the map? Is different than the buffers in this table? And I wanted to clarify that the buffers in this table are directly from W D F W's guidance. So if you have a site class two from your mapping. You will have a two hundred and thirty-five foot buffer if you have a type upstream, there's no deviation. Um so you you couldn't um come up with a different buffer than this. Um I mean, Francis and I are still kind of talking, I know that ecology wants us to put. Language in here to clarify, I actually feel like it would be a better use to. Um potentially have that discussion with fish and wildlife. Um just because they're better versed um in this particular, because it's their guidance. That is actually having these buffers and the tool. Um so I did add the citation, which, like I said, Van- both Vancouver and Clark County code. They have the citation, they don't have instructions on how you use the tool. Um that's not in the code, we don't typically see, that would be like if. We put instructions in the code on how to do a wetland rating, I I have never seen that before. Um they did ask a question on what to do if um a site has uh. Two site classes. And um Francis can weigh in on this, but in that case. What would, and we could put this text in, um it would be whatever site class had the majority. Uh was on the majority of the parcel. Um unfortunately, the mapping tools don't have parcel lines. Um that actually have the site classes. Um so it can be a little hard to determine, um but that's how it's done. There are um some designations that are, don't have a site class. They're undetermined and that's where, again, I go back to, those are things that. Um it would really be helpful to have a consultant. Figure those out because those are more complex on trying to figure out what you do when you have an undetermined. Site class. Um so my recommendation was to leave this as is potentially. Um put in here if needed, if there's multiple site classes. It will, the buffer will defer to the site class that encompasses the most area on the parcel. But I would not recommend putting any other language in.
So ecology presented another option, and that's to just require that the most restrictive buffer. The largest buffer be applied to the property, so where you have multiple, a larger one applies. Um Carrie's made another suggestion, um but tho- those are two things to consider. Um. If you wanted to discuss those at all now, or if you wanna uh wait until the deliberation after the public hearing to try and. Uh to get through those. But that's kind of the two options, ecology's presented, one is, this is what we'd like to see. They don't, as Carrie pointed out, they don't have a regulatory um requirement, they can only recommend things in this process. But we're trying to make this as close as we can, so when you do get into your shorelines, that ecology can just approve it, you don't have to spend a bunch of time modifying it. In that process, so then Carrie's recommendation um that the majority of the site.
Well, that's not my, that's W D F W's guidance.
I think W D F W wants us to use the most restrictive one, so if you have two different classifications on the site, they want you to use the most restrictive for the whole site.
Is that Francis, was that your understanding? I'm sorry, I had a conversation with Francis earlier and that was not what he said, so I just wanted to share.
My my, well, my take on it always comes back to the project. If your project is on a parcel and it's a big parcel. Whatever's whatever's nearest the project would be your site class if there's two site classes. On a parcel or or more than, more than two even, but. Or the predominant site class. Um and keep in mind one thing, site classes are based upon soil mapping. Soil mapping can be wrong one third of the time. So you may need, there may be be a place where a soil. Consultant would come in and say, well, this site class is wrong because the soils are wrong. So we need to probably have that actually in the in the ordinance.
Can I ask you what what's your consideration of what is a large parcel?
Well, let's say you're doing a house on five acres. Um it would be wherever the house is at relative to the stream is what you'd probably be looking at the site class. Um that's how I would look at it, but if it's. The house is equally split down a site class, one or the other. I I don't have an easy answer for that one. I I would still pick the predominant site class as the one that's probably appropriate. Other other than that, then we'd probably have to map it with somebody who's a consultant who can can do that.
I would probably think you're going to eh eh any potential builder is going to. Hire a soils engineer if they have any questions with regards to that. And that the borings would uh would determine the site class or the the soil type.
Right.
But I but I think in this instance, other than along our shoreline here, where we have established homes, there's a little bit of vacant land. And then out in our future U G A areas are probably where this is going to be most impactful.
Right.
Rather than in downtown with the where the citizens are living now, is that correct?
I agree.
Okay. And just to be clear, the choice before us is essentially to say either we adopt. The per, I think what you're saying is the one choice is take the most restrictive one, no matter where this project is located. And the other option is, and this is only for the case where we have multiple site classes. And so then the other option is that the the person with the project can work with uh the agency to determine or a consultant. To determine the actual site class that would be used or. No, the uh second choice is to choose the predominant one. And then a a third choice would be, um I guess Francis was putting a little bit of a spin on that, saying whichever one that development is most. Uh in in closest proximity. And that seems reasonable to me. Yeah, if you're building, and and this doesn't just apply to residential, if you're building a new commercial building. And you're closest to the resource and it's mapped at that um as a as a two. Then it's a two.
Right.
If you're, um the predominant one would be to look at the map and see, okay, well, this changes from a a two to a three across the site. And it's predominantly a a three, so then you'd have a three across the site. The most restrictive one in this case, which is what ecology is asking for, is. It's a two across the whole site, because that's the biggest buffer, the most protected. So you, so that's kind of a illustration of the three different options that I think are are out there um. If you have development across a a piece of property and your development is adjacent to both twos and threes. Then in that case, uh probably the more restrictive one would apply.
Mm-hmm, that makes sense.
Um but the, if you went with the proximity option, but if you go with the the other option where it's predominant, then you just look at what it's classified as. And what's the majority of your property? And then the unlikely instant instance where it's exactly fifty percent one and fifty percent other. I mean, usually, that's, I mean, that doesn't often happen that way.
Right.
But in the unlikely event, then you could always go with um ecologies that the more restrictive one applies. If it's exactly split. So so we just need some guidance, which one of those three options sounds most palatable to the planning commission and.
Which one gets us closest to ecology's recommendation?
Well, that would be.
Without actually.
Going with ecologies?
Wouldn't it be the predominant one?
I.
Predominant uh.
I don't know, Francis and Carrie, what do you think? Uh out of the other two options that we've thrown out versus they use the most restrictive? What gets us closest to what they're asking us for without accepting what they're asking us to do?
Well, I believe from the from the very beginning. Stepping out from this argument and thinking about, these buffers are big to begin with. Relative to what they have been, so I have a hard time. Putting another onus on an applicant. By saying, oh, well, now of these big buffers, we want you to have the biggest of the biggest buffers. So once again, the predominant, it should be based upon the project, where the project's at. And what's the resource next to it, and whatever it is, is it is what it is, but. I kind of would hate to see a little small, in your case, Todd, a small little site class. Um two on your property. And majority of property is site class three, and then you're stuck with the site class two buffer, that doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense. I mean, you could literally have a site class. Um five, it's a hundred foot buffer, and if you had a site class two. In the same area, you could go from a hundred to two hundred and thirty-five feet. That doesn't make sense to me.
So does one of our options incorporate the predominance feature?
But does it incorporate it with the with also the nearness of the project, right? Because if you have a predominant, the land, that's, let's say that has a category two, but. You're the area you're building only has category three. Then wouldn't you want the one that's nearest to the project to apply since your impact wouldn't actually be on the other zone?
Yes.
So then we have sort of a mixture of it, where you have the predominant class or the one that's closest to the project? So, I mean, yet another option would be is that you just apply the buffers to the zones as they occur. I mean, as as best you can map them um across the site that. The, in the event of a split classification site, the um the classification will be. Split throughout the site, so you might have a hundred foot buffer that jumps up to. Two hundred and thirty-five for a spell and then back down, but that gives a very irregular buffer shape in that case. Um you have mitigation and other other things, but that's kind of what maybe you're suggesting is that just just apply the one. Or you could just look at the proximity of the development to the site classification of the. Yeah, so the one that's nearest to the development begins to take precedence because that's the one you're actually gonna affect. And so that's, I think Francis is alluding to this, but I didn't know if the option we had with uh. The majority one included that caveat, if you will, or 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 it was a separate option, it's a separate, separate option, I think.
I I think I think it's, it's probably best, once again, focus on the project. Whatever is at the project location would be the site class. In the event that your project bisects two site classes, then you look at the predominant of. The on your property.
Yeah, yeah. Does that sound like a good option?
Yes, it does.
So did we get that, Carrie? Can we, can we include that option in there? And I think that, I mean, that's a compromise. It's not quite what ecology asked us to do, but I think it's, it's what the planning commission seems willing to do, so.
Can you, can you restate it so I make sure I I state it exactly as you just?
Yeah, so the site classification that's in closest proximity to the development applies for it for any. Any development, so when you're looking at the resource and then you're looking at the site classification and you're looking at the development. You find the closest proximity to that, and that's the buffer that applies throughout the project site. If you have multiple. Um site classifications throughout the site that about your development, then you go back to the predominant one, so whichever one is. Is most. So if you have, if you have five, four and and three on the site. And your development is occurring adjacent to the five, then that's the buffer that applies to the project. If your development is occurring adjacent to multiple site classifications. Then the predominant one on this, within the development area is the one that applies. I believe that was.
Well, that makes sense.
Yeah, well, it does make sense.
Can, if this can, sounds, that makes sense.
And and that is what Heather was commenting on, and that's the comment letter that I read at the beginning, that she was asking, well, what happens in these cases? But that answers that question, um whether or not it answers answers it, um Emily in her comment letter was the one that had referenced. The most restrictive should apply when you have multiple, so. And there's a further review of that. Uh this request, uh once, even even once that determination is made, what site class applies, there's a further review that needs to happen with C P or anything like that? Oh, yeah, I mean, ecology will get a chance to comment through C P and and the process if the project goes out for C P.
Right, okay.
I mean, some of the smaller, especially the single-family residential, that doesn't go out for any public comment or C P or anything. If you have subdivisions or commercial buildings, generally those go out for industrial development, anything like, anything larger like that will go out for agency.
Okay.
Okay, you wanna move on to the next one? I think we're getting close to the end of the.
Yep. So um we added a section under decreased buffer widths. Um ecology hasn't seen this yet, although, like I said before, they're not. Uh W D F W is really the agency that has jurisdiction over fish and wildlife habitat, but.
And this is section twenty four dot oh seven, or those.
Yeah.
Long one.
I think. Um so this was actually, this text was, majority of it was from Chehalis, is that what you said, Todd?
Yeah, I I sent you a copy of what Chehalis just took through their planning commission.
Right, um so this actually, because prior to this, we had no. Way to decrease um the buffer widths other than what was down below. Um and it was mainly just native landscaping and steep slopes. So this text actually allows um the buffer to be redu- reduced. Um. If you meet the following justifications. Which basically goes through, if you can demonstrate that. Your enhancement will provide equal or better habitat and pollution removal. Than the larger buffer, and you do this through a fish and wildlife habitat management plan, then you can reduce the buffer. Um if you need the buffer reduction, it's necessary to allow reasonable use of the property. Um and the remaining buffer is enhanced in cor- according to a fish and habitat wildlife management plan. Um then you can use the buffer reduction. Um again, that reasonable use, kind of like you saw in the other section where it says the need for the buffer reduction is not due to the property's owner's actions. Um and then it's no other feasible alternative to the site design that could be accomplished without the buffer reduction. Um and then the last uh qualifies what those reductions could be, so. Um for those buffers that are in the site potential tree height chart. You could not reduce them more than seventy-five percent if you have a type F or a type N P water. Um or more than fifty percent if. Um, or more than fifty percent if you have a type uh NS or which is a seasonal. Except as what's allowed in section twenty four point eight, which is actually the averaging section. Um, so that has a little bit different um uh allowances for reduction, so that's why. It refers back to the averaging section.
So this um. This section was added um in Chehalis. I'm. Familiar with that because I also work with their planning commission. Uh, I'm I'm only working with them to get this through that, but the planning commission had some. Um. Reservations about the larger buffers because they are significantly changing in all jurisdictions. And and they um basically, they weren't willing to forward a recommendation to council on that they adopt them, even though those are the buffer widths that the state. Guidance requires. Um, so in this case. We put this language in um or similar language in in that code to allow an administrative reduction. To allow them to get closer back to what they have now, as long as they can demonstrate. It works just as good as the larger buffer does, because all buffers aren't equal. You know, so it's not just based on distance. Um, so. This has been through planning commission there, but uh it has not been through agency comment or review. Um, so really, the question for you all is is, you know, should we keep this in as we continue to go through our agency review and should we present? This buffer reduction option to counsel. Um, we may get. More, it's likely we're gonna get more information. Either through our CIPA process or through. The sixty day review process, so it it may change. More after you make a recommendation. We might have to modify. You know, we we're going to present your recommendation to council in its entirety, but we'll have to, we may have to ask council to modify it in order for us to have a. An accepted um. Code section, so there's. This stuff may change after it leaves your hands as a result of agency comment, but only council can change it after it leaves your hands.
Well, I think the uh. The notion of reducing the buffer requirements by allowing. You to essentially landscape somehow part of your buffer. Is is a benefit to the property owner. And it gives them a place. To make. A nice area without having the. Restrictions of. Providing buffer vegetation, if you can prove that it does the same thing. You know, it mentions wooded trails and. And I assume the grasses would be good as as well as that, so. You know, it it would help in the planning aspect of. Your site, that you know, to deal with the buffer, well, this is where my backyard is gonna be. And it extends out into the buffer area by virtue of the. Of the landscaping that I'm able to do within the buffer area that normally would not be able to do. And so it lessens the portion of the site that you might want to use for actual improvements. You know, so that you don't end up with a person's stand backyard or side yard or or public area um. I I would, my position would be we. Forge ahead with it. And. Make them come back to us and say that they're not happy with it.
Generally okay?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
All right. Good discussion, thank you.
Um, so the next is in that same section, it's number two. Um, and what we also added, kind of like we did in the averaging section where we said you can't. Do buffer reduction and averaging. Um, it just specifies that um steep slope. Buffer reduction cannot be combined with buffer reductions allowed in that previous section. And that's partly because if we go back to. Functionally isolated. Um. Which is twenty four point O five. There is, uh if it's a. Vertical separation. You use the greater of the two distance, the top of slope highest point or fifty percent of the buffer width, so it's. It you you could have a quite a big additive if you were adding those two together. Um. So that's why that got added.
Any questions about that?
None.
Okay.
And then uh twenty four point O eight. Same same type of language. Um, that they can't be combined, so it just uh just adding that, just like we did in the wetland section. And that's that's all I have.
Okay, were there any questions? Um, I think. We have. Good direction on on what we got there.
I think we do.
I think everybody understands the direction we're going with that. Are there any other questions about uh the weapons or habitat pieces or? Any of those?
And I think we slogged through them and got what. We thought was palatable for. For our jurisdiction and. Thank you very much for your. Hard work.
Thank you.
Okay, and then um. So I think now we would probably ready to move into the public testimony um portion where we accept the public testimony. Um. Yeah, we can. I think so, but. Carrie, I don't know if if you guys want to hang out for the the public hearing and to address any comments. I think I can probably address most of them. Maybe if. One of you could be available by text or something, I could just send you a quick text message and ask you the question if I can't.
That sounds perfect.
Okay.
All right, thanks again.
Thank you both.
Yeah, thank you.
So now, I think we're ready for the.
I think we're ready to open for public comment. I think you wanted to make a statement with regards to some emails that you received. But let me ask this and. Your comments will be limited to three minutes, and I would ask. As being a. A a listener to many city council meetings. That you step up to the podium and speak loudly so the people that you have your back to. Can hear you as well. Uh, please come to the podium, state your name. And your address and uh then carry on. And this is about the. This public hearing is for these. Uh. Growth management plan only.
Which includes the zoning maps and the.
Correct.
And the LVC changes and.
Right.
Did you want me to lead off with?
I I did.
The the one comment that we received by email um or or we could pick it up at the end. So uh we did receive an email comment from uh Kyle Wheeler. Who was actually asking a question about the some of the zoning map. Um. Lines that we had chosen. Um. So he was asking. He was asking questions about. About this area. Of town, maybe like so that it, there we go. This area of town here and and specifically. Um. There there is a piece of property which has been commercially used in there. And it's in a residential zone and it's proposed to stay in a residential zone. Um. This is um. That's referred to as the the Gordon's Place at one twenty one Alder. And it was excluded from the mixed use zoning proposed. We've we've got that waterfront mixed use zone that we have down there along the waterfront. So we had parcels that were there. Um. And and that's. Basically, what we did was we took the waterfront parcels, but in this case now, um this this piece of property specifically. Is directly adjacent to that and and uh what Mr. Wheeler had had said is it's historically been a a mixed use property. Why did you stop the zoning line where you did and can it be changed to include this property? Um. So. I thought that was a good question and cer- certainly worthy of um of input during the public process. Um, so I believe. I've summarized Mr. Wheeler's. Comments. Do you have them in your email? And I think uh when we get to the deliberation portion, you can. Unless you want to individually discuss each public comment as it comes.
Is it useful to illustrate on the map where that where this is?
Um, yeah, I think I can, actually. I'm using a new. Twenty one Alder, look at that. That's right up. That's this piece of property right here.
Yeah.
So, uh and and you can see that. Um, that is. Adjacent to. This zoning line uh should follow that property line to encompass the entire parcel. That's. Just a mapping piece, but this is. This is the property. That we're talking that Mr. Wheeler is um inquiring about.
I I guess my first question is, is what is Mr. Wheeler standing in this issue? He resides out of town, and why isn't it the Gordon here speaking for himself?
This is a public comment that was received. We accept comments from everybody regardless of of where they live um. Or or whether they have, I he's 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 commenting on the map um. There's no real, when it comes to public comments on on broad based plans like this, there's no real standing. That preferred to residents or or non-residents, you don't um, so it's just like the agency's comment, um anybody. Any anybody can comment on the account plan, then you can choose to accept those comments or or not.
Can you elaborate a little bit on the historical mixed use part? I'm not familiar.
Well, uh in in Mr. Wheeler's email, and I and I do have some background on this too, because we actually worked through um. With me with the. With the Gortons, they were coming in and trying to get an expanded permit so that they could use their site, um but I'm I'm not intimately familiar with what goes on there.
There's currently um a commercial kitchen on the property. They um used to run the Bonanza barbecue.
Oh, yeah.
When COVID hit, they switched it over to doing catering, so they have a conditional use permit that allows for them to cater um. Out of that kitchen there, and it's it's all been approved. Uh, before that, I believe it was a taxi. Company.
Oh.
Um.
Well, the the conditions on that, however, were that there be no onsite events because it was in a residential area. That there be no onsite parking other than than pickup and delivery. I in fact, I'm not even sure there was pickup and delivery.
Yeah.
At the at first.
Right, so yeah, the conditional use, it runs with the property, so it's still in effect, but. They're just now doing catering out of it. They were they were wanting to do events at some. Beginning of the year, I think they did a couple of events.
Okay.
But that's what that's what that property now has been used for. It's.
You need to know the the. The specific nature of how that was approved and what it was approved for. Was not to become a burden uh uh um. Urging business.
Yeah, if you switch to the commercial.
We switch, they they had gone on, they wanted to have the commercial kitchen so they could continue to catering. But they were in a residential zone, and so the council was very concerned about traffic within the residential area, holding public events. Et et cetera, et cetera, so that were the that was the stipulation placed on the permit.
Mm hmm.
And um. So it hardly qualifies it, in my opinion. As that it's been historically a commercial mixed use area.
I see.
So.
So the the mixed use of per- conditional permits that are there have restrictions on not being a fully fleshed commercial zone. And so essentially, making it into a mixed use would lift that, and they could have parking and all that other stuff, right? And that would directly affect the residents that are next to them and so on.
Exactly.
Sort of thing.
As as well all those zoning map changes that we're making.
Right.
I mean, that that is. That is true, and where you draw that line is based on. Of your local knowledge of what exists in each one of these areas. That's I I know we had. Quite a bit of discussion about where these lines went as we were going, and then um we modified them and changed them and. Um, but we didn't have a discussion on this piece specifically. Um, it does look like the city limits are. The city limits line is the green line on the map, um so it. It looks like.
Hmm.
The waterfront mixed use zone property um on this parcel here. Can you see my cursor up on the screen?
Mm hmm.
And then um. So that that parcel is actually outside city limits. Um. And this parcel is inside city limits, so um we. And then the next one is out, so the city limit lines specifically go around that one piece.
Hmm.
Of property there. Um, the adjacent zoning, we did propose zoning for our urban growth area too, which uh the county is. Uh considering honoring through a separate agreement. Um. So that zoning may be applied by the county by processing development permits if we can um negotiate our way through the agreement with. With them to to do that process. Um. So I. You you all know your community a lot better than I do. I I promised Mr. Wheeler that I would bring forward his his written comment in the public forum. I I think you have the discretion to recommend to council. Whatever you'd like on this one, it doesn't.
Okay.
There's nothing that compels a decision one way or the other. There's no. The right or wrong answer is based on your knowledge of locality.
I definitely think it would be useful to have a property owner uh talk a little bit about what, I mean, this would. It seems like the initial uh. Request to have the conditional permit came from a property owner based on the usage they wanted to do with the property. So if there was any sort of change that would essentially amplify the ability to to have more commercial activity on there. Wouldn't they want to inform, wouldn't, shouldn't we get some sort of idea of what they want?
Uh, I think that three minutes on this are uh.
Yeah. Uh, okay, well, so if you wanted to do a mapping change, we could, um so we can work on that in deliberation.
Yeah, sure.
Now, step forward.
Uh Eric Hayes, City Residence in South Toledo. I have some feedback on zoning. Just wanted to make sure you guys. Were uh getting the intention you wanted. Uh, some of it has to do with the waterfront mixed use. Uh, let's see, what was the, there was an issue there with um. And this is actually kind of the opposite, where you have properties that are not on the waterfront that are included, like the entire. Um block between Ramsey's and front, which none of which is waterfront and is business, so I'm not sure what Donald's place would be in the waterfront.
I think it was.
Yeah, it ended up being that way on the map.
Oh.
Um. And so I, so I colored that one.
We were using roadways is how we came up with that.
Okay.
So we, so we um we followed the roadway. For South First Street along the waterfront, um and then. Where that road. Ends, more or less. Uh, and then through town, we picked some of the some of the. Road cores.
So, so this this block here is Donald's place.
So we should, okay.
Should have been up to Front Street instead of the other way over to Ramsey. You're correct.
And then back up to. Back up to Second Street here and then over.
Right.
I did mark up the printouts, yeah. And then, let's see, while we're on the waterfront, there are also three. Properties on North. Uh, second. That aren't, don't that don't have a waterfront presence, so I guess you have to decide if you want to count the street or if you want to. Count the property as an actual waterfront property.
The property boundary touches the waterfront?
Three of those don't. I circled those in red.
Okay.
Uh, so I'll maybe they, you know, maybe they want, you know, one of them is the fire department, one of them is the senior center, and then. Then there's the the topmost one. Under the word front is uh. Kind of questionable, so whatever, I'm just giving you all feedback if you want to see that. Um, and then. The next thing was uh had more to do with mixed use commercial. So I saw that as you were heading down the east side of five O five uh five O five.
Right.
And and the north side of town. Uh, it makes sense for the five O five pointed ones, but then the the back half of that same square is still included, and that is mostly on that second sheet. Where I highlighted all those in pink. Um, and one of them is actually a apartment complex. So maybe some thought about that some more. Uh, and then.
Did you want to?
I would love when you'd show it, yeah.
It's it's the sheet here. A little farther north.
Little bit farther north?
Yeah. Okay.
Why do we have that on here? That's supposed to be.
These houses here. Right there on the backside of the the alley.
That was not our intent.
That are on the other side of fourth, yeah, it extends, so I would assume that. That the, you know, that you would. You would do the.
Our intent on that, Mr. Hayes, was to have the properties fronting. Five O five.
Right there. And then the other one I can just talk to and wave my hands a little bit. We've got schools and. The church and. Our watershed, all marked as medium density residential or low density residential. So I was wondering if we should have a. Facilities. You know, something that basically pulls them out of that. Yeah, there's a term for it. And Todd, it's on there. If you put the sheet over.
Oh, I know where that.
And so. And so, so that's our watershed, but it's marked. Residential medium density, and the school is marked residential low density.
Schools are, are, I mean, some jurisdictions, I mean, Chehalis, for example, has um. An open space public facility zone that they apply to those types of uses, so they have a special zone. So some jurisdictions do it that way. Um, other jurisdictions do just uh, zone them as uh. As residential or as something that makes it appropriate. Um, you know, schools are usually forever, but not, not always.
That makes sense. And then the sewer plant is marked as um.
Sewer plants are usually. But, but that was just by the adjacent zoning site.
Okay.
So I'm.
Just thought I'd, yeah, it's just mostly just feedback. And I guess the mortuary is also, I guess that's mixed-use commercial.
I think addressing the one issue, you know, the watershed and the school, that they may or may not forever be there. And what would we want them to be zoned at if they ever owned away?
Uh, water's good, it's like uh. Sacred ground as far as I'm concerned.
It would be.
Yeah.
In a hundred years, you never know. You can be making fresh water right at your own sink, you never know. Okay, next. Yes, ma'am. Be glad. You go, please.
And I, this, I don't know if this is the best place, and if it's not, then maybe you can help me direct, direct me to this place. But I'm wondering on my piece of property, if this can be annexed and wanted. And if it's not, what steps can I do to get maybe give that one?
Uh, and your address is again is where? Right on where Jewish Perry is.
So I'm right at the corner. So, I'm, if you go five thirty Toledo Vayner.
We'll try to pull it up right now.
Cause you go up Toledo Vader, the next street after Plamen Don is.
So this is one, one, three. I just zoomed to it, see if I can.
But I don't know if that is already in the plan or not.
No, ma'am, it is not.
But we all, we'll be extending the urban growth. In the next couple of years. So, I mean.
I don't think our, our, I don't think our plans went up Toledo Vader plus Plamen Don, had they.
So that one is not in our, uh, in our urban reserve area. It's not in our urban growth area, and it's not in the county's proposed. Um. Overlay, so it's.
Every place else, like, it's a phone company, it's a song since you'll be in the corner.
But the lines on the maps are, are very, so I, I mean, this is the right forum to ask that we change our urban growth area. Um, to include that piece. Um, absolutely, you, you're in the right place at the right time. Um. But that is currently not contemplated to be even within our urban growth area or in the urban reserve that the county's proposing, so. So it would be last, I mean, I mean, it's probably, if it stays the way it's mapped now. It's probably a five to a ten-year process to get it so that it could be next. Cause we only update this every, every ten years, basically, so.
And, and let me tell you that the annexation process is costly. It took all those folks, you know, from the property owners of where the subdivisions may be to Toledo Tel. And Sorensen to. Get together to pay the bills that are necessary for the studies to go forward with annexation. Uh, so it's not something a couple of homeowners wanna do on the side, although I'm not gonna discourage you.
Sorry, same, just from my understanding, it would be better financially to wait until. Maybe the city wants to do it later down the road.
Well, do you have city services done? Well, you won't because you don't have water and sewer up there yet.
At some point.
Yeah, I would think so.
I, I'd, I'd reach out to the county's planning and, and make a formal request of both county and the city. So that when they are, cause we are, we will get to a point where they're formalizing the urban reserve into our urban growth. And who knows, they might be having a happy day.
So, so we can do that through this process. Um, we've, we've been working with the county on establishing that urban reserve area. We've been working with the county, um, we, we sent them our urban growth area as we desire it. And we aren't proposing any expansions at this point because of the environmental analysis needed to do that, so. That's why we agreed with the county to not expand our urban growth area through this process, but this is absolutely the right. The right time and the right place to make that request. Um, and I'd encourage you to make that request of council too. But it is um, the reason that both city and county are. That the city didn't take on an urban growth boundary expansion to move our urban growth boundary is because there's a lot of environmental. Review necessary to do that, because the state sees that as taking land from a, from a rural use. Um, and putting it into an urbanized environment, and there's a significant change in impacts that are possible when you're urbanized. You can build at higher densities. You can build different things. So moving that line, even for one parcel. There's a significant urban and environmental analysis, and the city uh, didn't, didn't want to take that on at this point. Um, and the county didn't wanna take that on through their process either, so. We agreed on what's called an urban reserve area, which isn't specified for any city. Um, and that urban reserve area, we're counting as our future urban growth area. Uh, and we're working with the county to try to establish some agreements um, with them directly so that, so that they can set some policies in place. To shift it Toledo's way rather than if another jurisdiction wants to claim that urban reserve area as theirs, so. It's a lot of process and a lot of time, but like I said, you're in the right place to make the request. Um, and it's certainly up to the city if they wanna try to take on an urban growth boundary expansion through this process.
Thank you. Next. All right, ma'am.
Amy Scalise, Toledo. Um, in looking through this that was posted on the website, which probably. Um, I just wanna commend all of you on your hard work. And uh, extensive labor through this process. Uh, it's, it's really a service to the city. And I appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you very much. Do I get my year and a half?
Nope.
Nobody else? Then at this time, we'll close the public hearing. And move on. Do we have any other business to take care of here?
So, it, it would be great if, if you all could deliberate on some of the public testimony that was presented, and if so, to make a motion to either. Forward the draft as presented onto council to. Direct staff, make some changes and bring it back to you all at your next meeting next month. Or to make changes based on specific public testimony and then forward that to council.
From a personal standpoint, Tom, go ahead.
I think uh, the voice of Mr. Hayes brought up to impress.
Yeah, I think that was gonna be.
Uh, and I, I don't think there's really.
So there, so categorically, or were there specific ones that you wanted to implement and specific, cause Mr. Hayes uh, offered testimony about. The um, the potential for a, a public zone for some of the properties. Um, which is a whole separate zoning code, so that would probably be something we would have to bring back and work through, at least in your next meeting. Um, if we were going to establish a new zone for public uses.
I, I don't think we really need to do that, Todd, because I think we can leave the school as it is, is, is own residential and the watershed, because. The watershed's never going away, and if the school does, that's probably the zoning we'd want for it. I think the things that we need to address are the, the defined lines with regards to the mixed use and. Um, I think. How I missed it, or if I didn't look at the map correctly, but I know that we took these maps home and drew up where we thought they were supposed to be. And it was my thought that we were going to stay with those parcels that were fronting. Highway five oh five as mixed use. And not encroach into streets beyond that.
So we.
But you're going down Fourth Street there and you're including.
Yeah, if we do that categorically, then we're going to exclude a lot of downtown that doesn't front on five oh five in the mixed-use zone. So like these parcels over here in this area, um. Uh, and I pointing to Cole and Fifth Street, this area over in this part doesn't front on five oh five.
I don't, see that, pull that back down a little farther. This way, fortunately.
So this was.
I think you could draw the dividing line between the property lines to tell you the truth.
Yep, so on a projection of Ford Street, on this side, just, just so Fourth Street is now the dividing line instead of these property lines.
Correct.
Here, okay, so move that basically. The, the half block or whatever to exclude those properties that are on that side of Fourth Street, and then project that line down here. And then do we jump back down to Fourth Street at this point?
I think we're still trying to stay within the parameters of those spacing.
So we, we'll still come here, and then with this one would go there.
Correct.
And then this one will be out. And then.
Does that end up excluding the corner uh, all, all the way on the, keep going to the left there on your screen? The last corner and the large piece of property that's not abutting the, this one, the roof. This one.
The trench.
This one.
Yes. Based on that logic, that doesn't seem to touch the.
What is that now?
That's more just a cemetery.
That's the cemetery, yeah.
So that one then gets converted back to the, the residential use that it's adjacent to.
Well, it's some, um, format, I guess it is.
Yes, that's true. So I, but then as we move. Yeah, so, so it, I mean, it's gonna be one of the. One or other of the zones that it's adjacent to unless we wanna completely revisit the zoning map.
Todd, the, the one that you were referring to in spacing to. Is the cemetery important.
This one?
That is identity, non-living.
Identity, identity, non-living people.
Yeah, so though, I think the mixed use makes sense for, for the cemetery.
So just keep it as it is on the map now.
Yeah, uh, I mean, it's not never gonna go away.
But then, yeah, over here, we want this line and then to jog only with the ones that front until we get to Silver Street. And then now at Silver Street, it expands way out to properties that don't, aren't anywhere close to five oh five. Do we still?
Are they mixed use now?
Yes, they're proposed to be mixed use now, so we go down Silver Street.
Yeah.
Way through the church.
We go down Silver Street, and then we meet up with Second, and Second becomes the dividing line. And then similarly up here, we brought out on this side to capture more of the downtown core.
And it's not that I object to mixed use, I, I think it's highly appropriate in certain instances, but if I live over at Silver and Third. Do I want a Togo's going in next door to me? Or a sandwich shop, or?
Well, Silver and Third. Silver and Second, Silver and Third is here.
Is it, let's be realistic on.
So do we wanna leave Third as the dividing line? And then move, which, do we move the residential?
What do you think, Eric? I think Silver down Third, the, uh, the, the pass through of Third Street.
But the question, the question, what are we, are we, don't we wanna encourage the mixed-use part in that area of downtown, or?
Well, this is uptown. This is a little bit uptown.
Oh, I see.
We want, we want to stay along five oh five.
Okay.
But not go back into residential.
Understood.
Yeah.
So with this block here between Third and Second, then have. Well, we said we don't want the waterfront mixed-use zone to extend up this way anymore, so this would go back to residential.
Go back to residential.
The adjacent residential zoning.
Say, you had talked it out, I don't, you know, I, I don't know. Not somewhere you want to go up to.
So, so in our mixed-use zone, we're allowed to do, we're allowed to do both commercial and residential.
I mean, essentially, we're eliminating these six lots.
We're eliminating. Yeah, eight lots.
Well, those eight lots, oh, that's Cole Street, okay.
And then the question becomes at Cole Street, then what do we do with these lots here? So you've got another. Six lots on that side.
That whole block, right, cause that's down where Res, where, and those are all black, so there, you know, would you want those filled with houses? Probably not, you probably want those filled with.
You're right, I agree.
I can, you know, I could be either way on that upper drive, because. I mean.
This block between Second and Third.
This isn't over, this all washes down. This is the, this is the house that we approved a couple of years ago, like Kirkville.
Right.
Silver, um. You know, this, this is a single item that could be converted to something a lot nicer if the property supported, you must have used, supported it, so.
So you don't wanna just come down to uh, Silver and.
Maybe that's not bad, maybe that is good.
Yeah, there's a little residential area right above the, the, the red part now, and I, and I think, yeah, I don't know that. How much density of uh, sort of retail uh, or commercial would actually go. Improve that area right there, but I don't know.
Yeah, it's, it starts to get into residential and I protect people's residential privacy awareness.
Right.
And I just, if you could go a little farther south, Todd, I missed another one with.
So, so we're.
Oh, sorry.
Is the planning commission fine with leaving the map as it is between Silver and Second and SR five oh five?
I think so, and, and I think then we make that divider, the property lines going up along Fourth.
Along Fourth, and then we try to follow only.
Only those fronting five oh.
Only fronting five oh five after that, so we, we use. This projection of Fourth here to come down, and, and then. And then we drop down and include only those fronting on five oh five until we get to Silver Street, and then at Silver Street, we drop down to Second. Use that line all the way down.
And then use what you have.
Okay. Which?
This is the, this is the old, this is the old church slash theater, it's a haunted hut.
The haunted hut.
So, yeah, this historically mixed use. Right, cause you're in residential mixed use right here. This was also um, mixed use.
Yeah, that was five years ago.
So that triangle, that triangle of mixed use. So that parcel that you're pointing to doesn't actually abut. That's a mapping error that I just need to correct, that triangle that extends down like that.
Yeah.
Um, that's entire, it, it, it's just a polygon that.
This building right here, Todd, is, is a, is circular, is a zero-lot line business building.
Used to be a theater and a teach store and.
Up to the edges of its lot, so it's, it's, it's following the business building, oh, oh, business building code.
Um, well, that's the, so the Old Town zoning was an overlay we added to achieve a difference in lot sizes within the downtown core. That planning commission directed in the last meeting. So let me, let's see, so that's. That's the Old Town overlay that allows the larger density and lots. I, I see what you're saying um. About the use of that site, but it's gotta be one of the adjacent zones um. Let me turn that off. So. But there is no mixed use that's, that, that it's really adjacent to unless we were to bring the mixed use across up here and include this parcel.
That's, that's, that's the um. That's the school district.
That's the school district building across the street.
This one, and then we want this one to be mixed use too?
Oh, oh, no, this is all, yeah, no, this is all, this is all business, it's just not waterfront mixed use.
So, so maybe if we use State Route five oh five to come down.
Continue, yeah.
Well, see, I thought we were coming down Front Street.
And then along Front Street, and then.
Yes, your red should come over to fill that.
And then to capture these two parcels then into waterfront mixed use.
This is a residential.
This one.
Just a duplex, duplex.
So that, so that would be allowed in the, in the.
So it'll be allowed, the grandfathered in.
So if we make this five oh five Front Street. And then maybe down along First, and then back up this block, and then up, and then up to Augustus, and then over. To connect back up to the red.
He never did what you're saying. Yes.
I got, I got it, yes.
I like, yes.
That's my house, yes. I don't like that at all.
So what did you just propose?
Well, we have a, we have a business building that they put in residential, so. Well, we have a, we have a business building that they put into national, so. You can't live without. It's a business. Right now it's a narrow.
Right now it needs to be demolished.
Yeah, but, but once you demolish it, it's too small to build. Because it's zero lot line, it's only four feet wide.
So why would we make the allowance just for a building that's there like, that's not gonna be, that's not viable to be.
Would you rather see it converted to mixed use or would you rather see it converted to residential?
What is the realistic outcome is the, wouldn't it be absorbed by the neighbor, by the adjoining property to be usable?
And the adjoining property is same owner, so yes, we could pipe them. On zero lot line so they can actually build a house on.
So residential would probably seem like it's the right thing for that lot, or is there some factor that we're, I mean, I don't know.
I, I think you're right, Renee, I think just leaving it residential then would be.
It does make sense.
Okay.
And you don't have to touch that.
Is there something we're not considering?
But I am touching the mixed use.
Yes, you are.
Waterfront there is the way, so red goes this way, red's gonna come front that way.
To, to here. The first street.
That's why the state, you see it. This is all unbuilt.
Augustus.
Right.
Like that, so this block turns red, that's right.
You know, I'm having a big place.
Right. And then th- these blocks up here that we're taking out of the waterfront mixed use, um. Like where we're sitting now, Toledo City Hall does not abut the water, so that would be out of waterfront mixed use. And then the mixed use zoning would extend down.
Well, I don't know about that, uh, you know, I, I, I think when you, I think we leave it as mixed use, waterfront mixed use because. No telling what.
How far back you're gonna be pushed to build actually.
City Hall, this is going to be like.
A primo.
A, a great spot like the, the, that they left. Their, their is talking about, right, with the, with the. Brick, a big brick walking area, you know, and stuff on the, so that's, that's fine. That, that it stays.
Yeah.
I think you leave it the way it is.
Okay, so leave that dividing line.
Place, that, that whole block out of the waterfront.
Right, he's, he's doing that.
So this block comes out and goes into regular mixed use like the rest of downtown.
No, this block here comes out toward the red.
Yep.
This block stays.
Stays.
Mixed use.
Okay, and then the dividing line stays.
Stays down the.
First street. Um, and what did we want to do down here with Mr. Wheeler's input? Do we want to extend waterfront mixed use up to capture that piece or not?
No, I, I think the, the issue is the fact that he's in a residential zone. And he knew that going in and he applied for a permit to do a specific thing. And then. I, I don't mean to be blunt, but it seems like he's using the past permit process. To now say that he's been mixed use historically and though, why don't you throw me into the mixed use area? Because it still affects the residential traffic and all the residential problems that were there before. And, uh, I wouldn't, myself would not vote too for that to planning, to city council for food.
Okay, so for the Hayes testimony, we've. We've made revisions to the. The mapping, we're not going to implement any changes to the public services zoning in our recommendation to council. Um. And then, but these other mapping changes were acceptable as we discussed them.
I need a motion to that effect.
So this would just be for, this particular Mr. Wheeler's request to be forwarded to council, they would, they would look at that or they just simply wouldn't.
It's part of the public record, but whether or not you make it. Part of your recommendation is what we're asking, so and we're asking on the two mapping changes, um, were. The testimony that Mr. Hayes just presented and the written, um, testimony that Mr. Wheeler submitted.
Yeah.
So I guess I was just asking, do we feel like, do we feel like we need to look at the zoning map more? Do we need to bring it back? Or can we move on from the zoning map? I think the LDC, you were categorically okay with what.
Right.
And we got good direction there. There weren't any comments at all in the comprehensive plan document, so.
Let them.
Changes were good.
And then, so now we're just down to working on the mapping changes, so if we can get to a point where you feel comfortable giving me clear direction on mapping changes. Then you could make a motion and recommend to council. That. That they, that they, um, approve the comp plan package as, as it's been modified in this meeting.
With the zoning maps modified as we described.
As long as I'm clear about what you described.
Okay, so that maybe, do we need to revise it up again or?
No, I, I think I was trying to summarize my understanding.
Okay, let's do that.
So, so my understanding is, is that planning commission is not supportive. Of including Mr. Wheeler's change on the mapping that goes to council, uh, but are supportive of the mapping changes. That Mr. Hayes presented, uh, with the modifications as we discussed them in this meeting. Except that not interested in changing, um, the public facilities pieces to a separate zone.
Okay, I want to, as part of Mr. Wheeler's comment is concerned, that was my opinion. But I want to make sure that we have the opinion of the rest of the commission members, because I do not speak alone.
Is it, uh, would be parliamentary procedure or the correct? For me to recuse myself from an opinion on Mr. Wheeler's.
If you believe that you can't be objective in your decision making, then.
I can.
Then you should be, so you should probably be.
Uh, so that property. They had, um, a barbecue there for a while, right?
Yeah, they had a conditional permit on their residence to be able to use it as a.
Catering.
Catering preparation of food so they could take it elsewhere.
Are you talking about Bonanza? That's, that's the building they used to be in. Before they retired. And that is now owned by a gentleman who is leasing it to the five oh five art community.
Owned by a different person.
Yes.
Yeah. He's like a retired, there's any deals and rare books and such.
So what is your position on this? And Renee?
So I, I, the, I, I guess what I would say is, um. I understand the ask that he's saying, but i- if the whole thing is based on historical mixed use. And the only thing we have to go by mixed, historical mixed use is a. Conditional permit issued for food preparation, that doesn't seem like it's historically mixed use, but. Not sure, I guess, what the actual, if there is some other issue that were, that's not surfaced in these emails, that may be. Uh, something we really need to consider, and so I would just, I, my recommendation would be that, that, uh, if. The, the owners of the property have some legitimate, um, concern that they really want addressed. And maybe didn't feel comfortable coming forward, that we give them the opportunity to do so at council. So that would be my recommendation, so that we don't just say no, because I, it does seem like there's a lot. You know, we don't get, we didn't get a lot of public input and this is a lot of public input, so maybe it would be worth sort of letting. Giving that opportunity for the property owner to be able to speak at council, that would be my recommendation.
I think passing the buck to the city councils makes a part of it.
It is very, very. Upstairs, upstairs, there's their house and. Mixed use, I mean, they used to have a tax cap, I mean, all they're doing is parking cars, they're right waiting and teaching, and they're not. Throwing the events and so. Now they can cook all the food they're, they're built.
Are you talking about the Gordons?
Yeah.
Yeah, but how would you like it now if they're mixed use and they open it up for a restaurant?
I don't want that.
Right.
Right, so the only thing I would say is that, that, so as far as the mixed use argument for this, we should include it, my answer is. We don't have enough information to, to make a decision like that, doesn't seem like it makes any.
Yeah, you've been.
Based on what you're saying, but I would like to, to give the people who are asking for this an opportunity to come forward, if they don't go forward to council, then our recommendation is not.
And this wasn't Dan's ask, this was just Kyle Wheeler's comment, he's just asking why, so this isn't something that Dan.
Okay.
Put in motion.
I just want to make sure nobody gets silenced out.
Yeah.
Living on Second Street, if I may. I see right now, if you all, if you all approve and council decides to approve First Street's waterfront mixed use. That as a landlord, I'm going to be here and, and it's successful, let's say it takes off, right, there's restaurants, stuff on it. I'm going to be saying we need to block off. Pine and maple, right, and turn first into a one way up and down, because. Otherwise, you're going to have yahoos that have been, you know, out drinking, driving through town, and I think the same thing would happen up to second and third. And so may, maybe at the point where that all gets blocked off and he wants to block the residents out, blocking that off and coming in and out first, I don't know.
Yeah, he would like to see this go through, don't get me wrong, but this wasn't, uh, this, this email wasn't, um. Didn't include Dan, it wasn't, it was just Kyle asking, so.
Yes.
Yes, Ben.
This thing has already been litigated at council. And he was not supposed to have. People over and serving people and get. And we've already covered that, and as far as I'm concerned. Uh, it should be settled.
That's my opinion and, uh. Since there's only three of us.
With the minority, I, I, I will go with you, uh, with whatever you feel is the, is the right choice, so just my, my take on us.
I think if Dan wants to bring it up himself and cut council and make an appeal or, or, or. Um, a request, then he is free to do so, but as of now, I don't think we're going to move on the comments.
Fair.
So I'm looking for a motion to accept and, and forward this. Report to council. Uh, based on the modifications to the zoning map that we have discussed. The changes made by ecology and wildlife.
I just want to make sure that Todd, you have the full understanding of what we discussed.
Well, if you could stay and, and point it out to him.
Okay.
Eric, are you available? So can I get that motion?
You got it.
Can I get a second?
I get, I second the motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Unfinished business, did you want to go into that?
Let me talk for this. Oh, man.
Okay, that having no other response on that, then we have public comment to the meeting. Anybody want to make a public comment? Not dealing with the, uh.
Second Jamie's compliment, welcome.
Thank you very much. Of course, I think. It isn't everything. That being, let's, uh, take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
You gotta speak, my son.
Yes, yes.
All, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, now we are.